Patrick Lachabett.
Here.
And Brian.
All right, visitors' comments. Alex.
A question? No, why do you have a comment?
Go ahead.
I think you owe Julie Colmoto a public apology.
Apologize.
Well, that was good.
You're gonna get it.
Yeah.
Phil.
Just here, we just got to the last meeting about something I put your agenda, you guys get an agenda page, get together?
Yes.
And we will get our agenda page together at our meeting next week.
Okay.
And then let's...
You wanna, wanna get together at your meeting? It's next week, right?
Well, no, I can't make that decision. I'm just coming to say, hey, you know, put someone there.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And like you said, Thursdays, Fridays seem to be a good day, seven o'clock's good for me.
Yeah, I'm finally, I'm off all next week.
You're off all next week?
Yeah.
That'll work out super. I mean, this'll be, our meeting's next week. Ours is next Thursday, it's, you know, at seven o'clock.
Wanna try to get together?
So, wanna try to hit...
Before your meeting?
No, or after. We'll have our meeting and then after.
Okay.
We have to advertise up.
We have to advertise. We only need two days to advertise.
Well, we have to submit it to the Daily Press two days before it's gonna be in the paper.
So you have to do it tomorrow, right?
No. Our meeting's next week.
No, that's what I mean.
We'd have to do it Tuesday and hopefully get it out.
If you wanted it Friday.
No, if we wanted it Friday, do you wanna do it Friday? I'm not gonna do it on a Friday.
No, I mean, I'd rather, I mean, I don't know what the rest of it would think, but, you know, next Thursday.
Anytime after four, five.
Is that all right?
I thought we were gonna do it.
He says anytime after four. Anything, he's good, anytime after four, I'm good anytime after four. Anytime after four. How about you?
Yeah, I'm good.
Good? So it looks like anytime after four.
That's our meeting day, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Well, you want...
We need to have ours so that we can put our agenda together, which we haven't done yet.
All right.
Well, let's go for the next week, let's go for the following week.
That's right.
The following week after your meeting, like on a Wednesday, or a Tuesday, a Wednesday? The following week?
Well, it would have to be a Thursday, so I could make it home on time.
He's off next week, that's why.
Yeah.
I'm trying to put in the whole week.
I mean, I don't matter. As long as it's on a Thursday night, I'm good.
So is your Friday?
Yes.
July 8th is when you guys have your meeting.
What's that?
July 8th is when you have your meeting.
Yes.
So the next Thursday would be July 15th.
That works for me.
That's a township meeting.
Yeah, why don't we do it on a Friday? Jimmy says he's good on a Friday.
I am, I'll be here Friday, sorry.
Well, this is just for the township, yeah.
Just the water.
As long as the board's there, yeah.
Yeah, just the water, so we're getting together.
So there's no reason we can't have on 15th.
Yeah, there's no reason, like, on a Friday, you said?
15th is Thursday.
Everybody's saying Thursday.
Yeah.
Well...
I don't...
Is Thursday night all right with you, on a Thursday night?
That's a week from now, after their meeting.
Yeah, not next week, the following.
It's two weeks.
Yeah, that sounds good.
July 15th.
There you go.
Yeah, that's good for me, I'll write it down here, huh?
We get with her with the time.
Well, we'll have to advertise it too. Both of us are gonna have to advertise it.
Yes. I'll do one paper and she'll do the other paper.
Okay. You know, you can...
I'll talk to Lisa.
You talk to Lisa and...
What's better, what time is better for...
And the next question I'm gonna bring is, is it all right to come here?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, we're gonna have it here.
Problem solved.
Okay.
That worked for everybody.
Sounds pretty good.
But we need, we need...
You want it at 7?
I don't want what we had last time. I'd love to have, you guys have an agenda, everybody puts down what they wanna discuss, and we're gonna put down what we wanna discuss.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Come to the table with that discussion.
Yep.
So what time would you like this? 7?
7, 7's fine.
7 good for everybody here?
7 on a Thursday.
Too long.
Okay.
I'm gonna pull up. Okay, sounds good to me.
Thank you.
There you go.
I'd like to congratulate Patrick Lachabett here for a job well done. The short time he was with us, he did a splendid, outstanding service to our community. And due to unfortunate circumstances from other areas and people and so forth, it didn't turn out like he liked. Sooner or later, things will smooth out and we'll get things back under control, hopefully. So appreciate everybody showing up here tonight. Maybe we'll get something put together that's done.
Sounds good. Yes, thanks, Joe. Okay, on to the fiber guys. Let's hear what you got to say.
First off, thanks for having us.
Absolutely.
I guess we're just here kinda to give you guys the data. One thing that I'd really like to clear up is, we're not here to sell you anything. We did present a quote to Patrick as he reached out. If I'm being completely honest with you, it's a very small quote in our world. It's not gonna hurt us not to have that quote. I don't mean to make that sound bad, I'm just saying, we're definitely not here to sell you anything. We'll provide you the data if you guys make the best decision for what your needs are. You know, there's been some talk and I guess some questions about the dependability, the stability of fiber. I guess that's probably our topic, if you want me to start there.
Well, Julie, you had a question on like the depth of it, stuff, right?
Well, he's saying that, he's writing it all over St. Mary's, above ground.
Forty-six miles. So, let me, let me, let me just, let me just clear this up.
Yeah, go for it.
Fiber optic, when it was first really used as a data transmission source, when it was first built, was not, it was not, very brittle, very susceptible to multiple possible damages. It's, but that was in 1970-ish, let's just say. Whole lot of years between 1970 and now. This right here, this stuff is called dry flex. This is the fiber tubes here, there's 12 individual fibers in each of these. And these, these are 12 individual fibers right here. And as you can see...
Yeah, hair.
I can pull on it as hard, harder as I wanna pull on it, and I'm not gonna break that fiber. That, even with that amount of force behind it, if there was data being transmitted through it, nobody would see an issue.
Could we see that?
Yep.
And you keep talking, I just want to pass through.
Sure, that's why I brought it, I thought you guys...
Yeah, I can see it too.
And just so, just so you guys, I'll give you the quick rundown.
That's what I read up, it was fragile.
It was.
When I read up on it.
Seventies, eighties, maybe even early nineties, it was super fragile.
I was still 2000 when I was working, so, yeah.
It's not, it's not, it's not brittle at all. So, just so everyone understands, the entire world's infrastructure, literally, when I say this, I'm not exaggerating, the entire world's infrastructure runs on that. So everyone thinks...
Right, the backbone, yep.
No, not the backbone, to the home now. Google Fiber started about 10 years ago. There's, there's about 26 cities right now that are completely fibered, large cities. Colorado Springs being one. St. Mary's is on the list. We're doing it. So fiber used to be thought of as the backbone, it is not anymore. Copper plants are a thing of the past. 550 plant, 750 plant, if anybody's ever heard those terms before, they're being taken off poles right now and fibers being put up in their place.
Oh wow.
To serve end users, just to serve your home. I have fiber in my home, I live in Emporia, Pennsylvania. I have a direct piece of blast into my home. You'll be available to get that as well if you live in St. Mary's, Johnsonburg, Ridgeway, Brockway, Brookville, or Emporia, when we're done. The entire...
Not down here.
What's that?
Not down here.
It's not on that.
Not yet, not yet.
They'll, they'll get there.
Not yet. The entire world's infrastructure, I know I said that, is on fiber. Everyone thinks cellular, you know, cellular network is its own magic network in the air. It's not. Every single cellphone tower runs on fiber. So, when you make a phone call, everyone thinks you make a phone call, it goes up to the tower, and then it just hops towers to wherever you're talking to. That's not how it works. You, you'll make a phone call, the only thing that cell towers is there for is to get you to that tower, the closest tower to you. It comes down that tower, hops on fiber, and it goes to the closest tower to the person you're talking to, and comes back out.
I'm out.
All countries, all countries are connected by fiber, and that's through the ocean.
Yep.
So, when you're talking about fertility, there's, you can look, look up the maps, look up the fiber maps across the Pacific and across the Atlantic, there's probably more pieces of fiber than there are roads in the world that connect them.
Fiber under, under the ocean.
And it just lays there.
It just lays there and the ball...
It doesn't go in a tube, it's a conduit, it just lays there.
Wow, never knew that.
Yep.
In the water.
Yep, in the water.
They call it with a boat, and it just lays there.
So, if there's a...
Five, five.
They grab it at some point and follow it out and pull it up out of the water and...
Wow.
So, so the question then remains, well, you know, why is fiber, or, you know, why is fiber doing all of this? One, it's the data transmission rate, I mean, you can, it'll do whatever the optic is behind it. So if you have a laser that says it'll shoot 120 kilometers, it'll go 120 kilometers. So, this doesn't, there's really not much loss per, per, per fiber foot. The other reason is, the main reason is durability. It does not break. There are very few things that can break fiber. Shotgun blasts, sometimes, once in a while. I've been called out to an emergency before in the middle of the field, and a guy was shooting crows off, off the lines, 'cause he didn't want him in his field, and a BB came in, and there was, you can see the concussion on it, just like a piece of glass, you hit it with some sort of concussion and it would break. So, a concussive force like that would probably break it. Once in a great while, a squirrel might get hungry and decide to chew through it.
They want this stuff.
Yeah, they just wanna play. Other than that, the only other things that fiber is susceptible to is the same thing that copper's susceptible to. Truck comes by, takes out a pole.
I thought that one up there in Currie, was that fiber at UPS?
Just so, I was just gonna bring that up.
That was a good test.
I was just gonna bring that up, so that... Did everybody see the video? Did everybody see the video of UPS dropping, dropping it down into third gear, what, a second gear, and trying to take, and he ripped the pole down, both poles flopped in the air, the fiber came down onto the ground, electric sparked, went everywhere. Not one fiber with any provider that was through there went down.
Wow.
Including the fix. It was about a 14-hour fix. They took all of those fibers off of those poles, put them on new poles, placed new poles, put them on new poles, and not one customer went down anywhere. Power went down.
That's amazing.
Power's copper.
Yeah, yeah.
Fiber is also not susceptible to moisture in any way, shape, or form. It does not freeze. It can melt. So, I've had an instance where a house fire, a house was close to, where fiber was being hung, and it did melt. I got to a site one time, and this is no joke, the fiber had melted solid, so there was, you know, there was actually in that fiber, there were 48 fibers. Those 48 fibers melded together, didn't rip, it just kinda melded together. And when I got there, I could see the data transmissions, the light going back and forth between them. Out of those 48 fibers, 16 customers were still up and running. And all, all of the fibers were melting together. So, even though it was crossing waves, basically, it was still up and running. It does not, I said it does not freeze, it can melt. It's not susceptible to heat or cold. So, Antarctica, doesn't matter. Right now, when you guys have problems with your TVs, chances are, it has to do with the tap, either getting really hot, or getting a little cold, or just a drastic change in temperature. You know, some of the nights are down around 70, but some of the taps, the copper taps that are outside in the daytime, can get up to 120, 130, 140 degrees, baking in the sun, in that black box. Copper doesn't matter. It can be 300 degrees.
What about our, our situation that Patrick's talking about? I mean, you told him what you wanna do and...
Yeah.
This is a very common, common instance. We're doing this exact same job, and you can call him if you want, over, he doesn't mind that I share this. You could call him, Ross Defampolis in Ridgeway Borough. We're doing this exact same thing for him at his sewage plant.
Oh, okay.
And water plant, both of them. We just put fiber into both of those facilities for them on behalf of Windstream.
And user can fix it right up through our existing conduit?
Yeah.
Unless it's broke, or, you know, something like that.
Unless the conduit's broke or something.
Yeah.
Now, as far as, you know, we can talk bond rates, and we can talk gigabytes, and we can talk megabytes, and we can talk all that stuff. You guys are in the water business, right? I mean, this is the water authority. This is just the pipe. It's not gonna do anything. It's gonna sit there and be your pipe.
That's right.
That's it. So, it, but it's a wide open pipe. You can put anything you want for it. There's nothing that you guys would ever use that would max this out, ever.
Our biggest concern, right, is being able to operate that well.
Yep. When I tell the well to start, I want that well to start. Right now, we have radios, I'm running it right now. Earlier today, communication loss, well went down.
Sure.
I can't run that plant right now, the dirt's very, I need the well.
Yeah. And it's only 2,500 feet or something like that?
Yeah.
At 2,500 feet, over fiber, it might as well be right next to the well.
The bypass, there's a way around it, manual operation. Whoever does that has to be within an hour away. If it stops pumping chlorine, if it goes more than an hour not pumping chlorine, the chlorine consumption, the demand on the water is so high, this system would be a boil notice, or darn close.
Right, right. Now, just one more.
That's what we're talking about, right? Is that what always happens?
Yeah, we've made it work. But you have to get here very fast.
Sure. Now, as far as the dependability goes, to give you an idea, I, formerly I worked for Delphia, I worked for Time Warner, Comcast, a little bit, do some contracting stuff, and then Zito, Business Solutions, not Zito Media, not your terrible game, Zito Business Solutions. The reason it's terrible is 'cause it's on copper, so you know.
I can tell.
And Zito's changing that. So, I built the first ever, I was the lead engineer and the lead installer as well, for the first single fiber 100 gig network in the state of Pennsylvania. It leaves Philadelphia. It's 74% aerial, 26% underground. It leaves Philadelphia, goes from Philadelphia through basically every major town across Pennsylvania to Pittsburgh, up to Erie, across, over Cattersport, Pennsylvania, which is the primary hub, and then out of Cattersport, it goes through Spranton, and then back down to Philadelphia. Hitting every major town, basically. Every major town that's within, let's say, 100 kilometers. On that network now is over 700 cell towers in the state of Pennsylvania. Primary, that's their primary route of data. Also, is the entire interneur- tier 911 system. So, when you guys call 911, you think you're making a phone call over a phone line, you're not. You're talking to a person on the end of a piece of fiber, literally. I put the fiber into the building, so I know.
Yeah.
They just signed, the rest of the 911 center just signed with Zito Business Solutions for the rest of the state. So, within the next, I think they have about 15 months to complete the project, every single 911 center will be operating off of this, in the state of Pennsylvania. Right now, 19 of them. What else? What am I missing? I, I don't know how much more dependable you can be than to offer, than to provide that service to a 911 center. Most hospitals, every hospital around, St. Mary's, Dubois, they're all on, on the fiber. We've been contracted, it's been in the paper, or you may have seen, but we've been contracted to build fiber to the home, to 4,700 or homes in St. Mary's.
Nice.
We're in the middle of that project right now. We're 15 months in, it's about, gonna be about a three-year project. We also were contracted by Windstream to provide fiber to the home in the five towns I've mentioned, St. Mary's, Johnsonburg, Ridgeway, Brookville, Brockway, sorry, not Brookville, Brockway, and Emporia. So, every home is gonna have fiber, or at least the option to have fiber, probably, I'd say, by the end of next year.
And then they're ripping out all the copper.
And then they're hiring us to go back and rip the copper off the pole, 'cause it's useless.
How about that?
Well, it is, when you're talking major data transmission, when you're talking megabytes, gigabytes, you're right, copper is not the medium to use. But when you're talking the technology that we're using, pressure gauges and 420 milliamp loops, they're, it's way overkill for fiber. That's my point.
But it doesn't really cost much more.
Well, maybe not initially, but service-wise, perhaps.
There wouldn't be any service associated with this. The fiber's not ever going to break unless you dig it out of the ground.
The only service we need is our scale company, who we need regardless.
Well, we need that anyway.
There's, there's literally no maintenance on fiber? None? Zero. Once it's up, it's up or down, I guess, if it's underground.
Well, that's, that's really interesting.
There's zero maintenance. Unless, somebody stupid doesn't do a call before you dig, and digs it up, sure. Well, but if it was copper, you'd be down too.
That'd be down too, yeah.
So, that's the only way the fiber's gonna break. That's it.
Oh, go ahead.
No, that's it. That's the only way that fiber's gonna break.
I wanna make a comment, what I think about the whole situation, then I wanna hear all the other board members' comments. We had a gate planned for over here, it's a treatment plant, that hasn't gone in yet.
The slide gate?
Yeah.
It's in process.
Cancelled.
They started it.
They, they, what do you mean started?
They, it's being installed right now.
Oh, right now?
Right now.
I was gonna say, cancel the gate, 'cause I feel this is, you know...
Well, it's already started, but my question would be, my question would be, if we hired you to install it, right? Okay, not everybody could put that together, I understand.
Yeah, to actually splice it.
Yeah, not a lot of people can put that together for what I read up on.
It's, there's more and more.
Okay, well, more and more, it gives new ideas.
Fiber's gonna be the norm ending.
So, you would, you would back this stuff up?
Oh, yeah.
If you put it in, you would fix it if it broke, or, say we broke it?
I mean, if you guys dug it up, it would definitely come down and fix it.
You would still come down and fix it, I mean, at a cost, but...
Yeah, if it's our fault or someone else's fault, obviously.
But if it breaks, because it just breaks, now you guys are gonna back it up?
Sure, and we're not gonna, we're also local. So, you know, we do a lot of work with different municipalities around the area, and we don't, the quote, I'm, the quote that we gave Pat isn't the quote we would give some big business that we were, you know, to do. If something were to happen to this, you'd call us, we'd come fix it. If it was your fault, sure, we'd bill you. But it would just be our hourly rate. It's not gonna be, you know, $5,000 to get it fixed. It's gonna be, we're gonna send a guy down, it's gonna be a couple hours, and we'll get it back up for you, you know? It's not hard to splice. The reason splicing is such a thing, splicing fiber, is because the equipment to do it's very expensive. A splicer costs between, not in 12 grand, just one. And, but we have those, we have many of them, so...
And the thing about it, once you spish it up through there, you should go up through and detect it and put marker posts the whole way up through everywhere, you know, so that way it was marked good, and that way people, whether you get up there digging around, there'd be no reason at all.
The box is there now too, so we just put markings.
Is there a tracer in that? You can install a tracer. So, a lot of times when it's underground, you'll run the fiber right with a tracer, and then we...
That's a good move.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I'm sure you guys have tracer ones and stuffs.
Yep, we have a local area.
Yeah, I'm local here, so...
So, anybody can call you and say, "I want fiber." I'm building a house stuff here, you'll come down with fiber.
Well, so, we're not an ISP, so what we get contracted to do is, we give, we're glorified plumbers, that's all we are. We plumb light. So, you know, plumbers plumb water, we just plumb light. So, we build the infrastructure, and then the ISP, which is Zito or Windstream, provides you the data. So, if you now, if you had a house and you had a garage that was 3,000 feet in the back of a field, and you wanted to connect those two and have some sort of data transmission happen, absolutely.
Okay, 'cause you said you weren't doing the value of that stuff.
We're the ISP, but like he said, if somebody had a garage and they wanted to connect, yeah. Now, the other way that you can, you can accomplish this is, if you have direct line sites,
Sure.
you could do it a lot cheaper, and there's equipment out there to do that, that we can, we can shoot for miles. But, to the best my knowledge, what I've heard, you don't have direct line sites, so... That was something I considered, that would work good, for, like, to combine the internet from the plant to the office and eliminate the second internet bill and phone bill, if we could... It's right down here, right?
There are other options if other things fall into place, like you said. As far, if you don't have the option to do, like, a line of sight transmission, and you are over, let's, let's call it 325 feet, there's really nothing else you would want to do than fiber.
Dry radio, yeah.
You know, and to your point about, well, you guys aren't using that much data, sure, I agree. But, it's not really costing you anymore to have the fiber run. The fiber per foot is probably cheaper than copper right now.
What is the price per foot?
I'd have to look, I don't know what I could do.
I don't have a foot.
I don't have the exact, it's not a cents a foot, you know, let's call it, under 50 cents a foot, or less, you know?
Yeah, and it's only 2,500 feet.
Right. So, it's usually, like, it might even be less than copper right now, copper I think's not...
Well, yeah, it is, it's expensive, yeah.
So, there's really, it's, very rarely do you find things that are cheaper and better, or usually better and more expensive.
True.
It's cheaper and better. I, I worry copper in the ground, especially if it's not deep enough, with cold. Now, if it's deep enough, it's okay, it kind of maintains the right temperature, but sometimes people bury things six inches under the ground, bury copper six inches under the ground, and then you have problems, so...
That won't bother that stuff? Being six inch, six inches under the ground won't bother that stuff?
No, you could just lay this...
You can lay it right on top of the ground.
Yeah, they said they could run it up arially.
Yeah, you could, we could do it, Eric. You could lay this stuff on top of the grass right now, as long as it's over.
Yeah, as long as it runs over, yeah.
For animal use, yeah, yeah. First one was a buck 48, then they updated quote, was it a buck 68?
Oh, yeah, that's because we captured the shield again. Yeah, so it's bucks, a buck 68.
Yeah, I think the five pair of shielded copper is two something a foot.
Yeah, yeah.
So, thank you. That was very important.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys have any other questions.
Yeah, we'll talk about it some more and be excited what we're gonna do.
And again, guys, I really don't care, I do, 'cause I like who I work for, but I don't care if you guys pick us to do this or go to someone else and get them to do it, you know, we're not here to sell you on anything. We're, we have an office in St. Mary's, we have an office in Dubois, so... And, one other thing I'll, I'll leave on, and I only just overheard it, and I apologize if maybe I'm out of line. Just so you know, his wife does not know anything about fiber and doesn't work in the fiber division.
Well, the only thing about that is, when you're on the board, or a person who is getting quotes for people,
Sure.
then you have to declare, otherwise it's a conflict of interest.
Sure, sure.
Even if it's in a different department.
Sure. And there's, I'm just saying, there's no benefit to brokenness, I think she...
No.
I mean, if she works there, the attorney did get back to us.
All you did was give us a quote.
Right. The attorney got back to us, there is no conflict of interest.
And honestly, guys, I would, I would tell you, if you wanted to get a quote from someone else, if, I mean, we would match it, I'm sure. I mean, they're not gonna do it for us that cheap, I don't think. We're, we're local to you guys, we, we care about local municipalities, local, just communities. So, we just, if you're gonna do this, we would like to do it for you.
How much more for the tracer wire, like he said, if you have to put it in?
I didn't put tracer wire on there, I wasn't totally sure how, you know, you needed it ran, or what you wanted to run. I can look that up.
I don't think it's a lot, I mean, tracer wire.
It's just a reel of...
Oh, okay.
Copper.
Copper.
But you're putting it in, and you're backing it up.
Sure, yeah.
And we would, we would know almost instantly since it's hooked up, because of the issue.
Yeah, I mean, I...
At that point, if there's not, it should be...
I don't even know what data you're... I don't even know what data you're planning to transmit over this. I'm assuming it goes into some switch, and then that switch is gonna connect the fiber.
You were just talking about something, about a signal from here down to your plant. I mean, what do you talk, what's that all about?
They kinda look like satellites or something.
Yeah, all they are is a little, it's not even a dish, it's a flat.
I think I've seen them.
They're call points-of-point connections, and they are awesome. You can usually get a gate service close to 800 meg, something like over 30 miles.
And you said that would do away with what?
We could eliminate one of the internet bills by doing that.
And you're talking, just to give you a ballpark on the equipment itself, it's under $300.
Yeah, it's cheap.
It's cheap.
And you would save a lot more, I know it's a separate project, but you would save a lot more probably by doing voice-over IP. Because you would, you could do all the phones just from that central hub rather than-
Sure.
We have a phone line up here. We have two phone lines down there for the fax, the mail, the dialing.
What would be a ballpark idea of the price of that?
To do point-to-point, just to something point-to-point?
Yeah, just a number within a couple hundred bucks.
I mean, you'd try couple of switches unless you already had it. Probably, you know, I'd have to do the math.
We could definitely vote, when you're ready, we'll vote it for you, but-
We do that all the time.
I understand.
We implement those a lot of times in businesses that have two facilities that are farther apart. Another big instance is the whole garage situation. We have many home users that have called us and say, "Hey, I want internet in my garage. It's not attached to my house," so we just put up a point-to-point.
And we'd have, I'm assuming Zito does static IPs, you know?
Yes.
Does that IBPN to the SCADA, or anybody connecting that can say, "You got some VPNs, it would be static."
Yep, and you guys are not too, the fiber paths right down here, do they have fiber now? Do you have Zito fiber now?
You're probably on Windstream.
Windstream fiber or Windstream copper?
No, it is fiber.
Well, you'd probably be in, I don't know what you have.
Zito's here, but it's not fiber.
It is fiber. Zito's right down on the road, they just have to build up the strategy. They're right down by the gate, I mean, the line runs right past the gas station.
So then, basically, you could have one phone system, have fiber both, or have fiber at one location, point-to-point.
Single, single.
Yep, and then you could extension dial up here, I mean, it's endless what you could do with that.
It's all about saving money, right?
Right. And I would venture to say, and I don't know this exactly, but I might be going out of line here, I would say 70% of the businesses in St. Mary's are on fiber right now. Zito mostly, Zito's commercial services, Zito, everyone knows them, is Zito Media. That's the copper plant, that's a cable plant, it's not good. But they have Zito Business Solutions, and they're all, nobody really knows it, they don't even market it. That's who provides the 901 system, that's who provides everything. It's the same owner, but two different entities. So, that's who I work for, is Zito Business Solutions. About, I would say, literally 70% of the businesses in St. Mary's are on Zito fiber, same with Dubois. All of Treasure Lake is run on Zito fiber, so.
Very good. Thanks for coming, fellas.
Thank you.
And I, you guys can have this if you want to.
How long would it take if we decided on this for it to be installed?
I don't need to know, I don't need to know. If you want to show anyone or whatever.
How long would it take if we decided on this?
I'd just have to order the stuff. It's, I probably will have to re-quote, just to make sure that the price has been the same, because I think it was like three months ago when I sent it to you.
It's been like two, because I had it for the last-
We usually say like every 30 days, practically quote. I just don't know if the fiber price has gone up a few cents or down, you know?
With COVID, it's just, it's crazy. I mean, you've seen it, wood and everything else. So, yeah, we would definitely have to re-quote it. And then Patrick, were you running the fiber?
Originally, yes.
Because we didn't pull labor, I don't think.
You did.
Yeah, the second time. I think we pulled it one time without, and then-
Yeah, so, but I stepped up too last time. It's something you guys are used to doing, maybe we don't really want it. We might be faster if it were on just how you guys do it.
Yeah, and running fiber underground is just like running just about anything underground. It's, it can go really good, and you knock it out real quick, and then there are times when you're really strong.
What's going between all your manholes or whatever? It's not just a direct straight conduit, is there man ground manhole?
There are, yeah, there are full boxes.
And you have a string in there or something?
Yep, there's a string in it, and a conduit, empty conduit.
Okay, great. And that makes it awesome.
Yeah, probably every month.
Oh, is that, oh, okay. So, if you wanna see if anything's broke by chance, just go and pull that string a little bit, and have a guy on the other end to hold it, so it doesn't pull through.
Now, wait, how big are these full boxes, too?
They gotta be-
Okay, well, another thing that can be done, and we always usually do it, maybe not every one, if it's over 100 feet, but let's say every three or four, we leave, let's call it a slack loop in there, or a service coil. You know, that way, if something happens, let's say, for some reason, something does happen, you've got some slack to put everything back together.
You've got one splice instead of two.
Yep, and you don't have to rerun the whole thing.
Thank you very, very much.
Yep, thanks a lot.
Anybody just come up, I'll leave a couple cards, my email's on there. He's the brains behind the fiber.
Thank you very much.
Obviously, but yeah, just reach out to us, we'll answer any questions.
Thanks, guys, it was a pleasure.
Hi, Brendan.
So, Pedro, I need approval for the agenda.
We need to add the new business audit, number two. It was already-
I was gonna ask for a executive session to discuss, I guess, the status of my employment and being certified operator in charge.
And legal matters.
Yeah, very good. So, we will have executive session after the adjournment of this meeting?
If we're gonna make any things, we don't, we compete to go into executive session, and we can come back out. You don't, you don't-
I won't need any decisions.
We don't need any decisions from the other one either, so.
Very good. Okay, approval of the minutes, regular meeting minutes, June 3rd. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. How about a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion, just to be-
Have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, approval of the minute, regular meeting minutes, June 3rd, point come up. I read a moment, it's not, I didn't see anything on it. Have a motion to approve the minute?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting minutes of June 3rd, 2021.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, Treasury report.
I gave you this updated copy on, in front of your places, because I was on the first today, so I could already finish that. The balance and checking account is a 531, was $55,697.62. Total deposit was $10,413.2. And we had accounts payable $39,435.03 plus two, and a sub checks of $30. Our balance and checking account is a 630, was $26,643.91. In the savings account, it was $256,313.66 beginning balance. And balance and savings account at the end of this month was $256,324.20.
Okay, approval of the bill?
Total bills for the month of June was $39,435.30.
I'd just like to have a copy of these, root bill after, just a copy of these, root bill after.
Can I get it on Monday for you?
Sure. I have a couple of questions about the bill while we're going through it. Fairway Laboratories, $520.
Yeah, that's a lab, that's for, they were, what are they called?
It was either asbestos testing or-
Yeah, but they were called, they changed names.
Yeah, they were Mahapien.
Yeah.
That's regulatory exam, can't apply that.
Don't think of them either.
So, some sort of testing is what you're saying, okay. What is PRWA?
Conserving groundwater.
Oh, it's a dues?
No, that's for Justin's class to take his test.
Oh, okay.
Number 42. Is that still your attorney or is that your?
No, he had to finish a lawsuit or a right-to-know request that was, that we were involved in it. And this is his final bill right there.
Okay, so this is the final?
Is this for Houston?
Yeah, he's still doing the Houston stuff.
He's done, that was the only thing we had him outstanding, he has completed.
Oh, he is done now, so that's good.
No.
I have a question, Patrick, you're not gonna like this, but your pay ending 6/23/21. That's for a two-week period?
Yeah.
For five hours a week?
Right, that includes my vacation, that you guys agreed to.
Yeah, well, we did agree to that. It doesn't say that.
But that's paying his vacation.
It was paid with one check.
Okay.
I took it as vacation.
Okay, no problem.
And it's, right now, it has been more than five hours a week. Obviously, today is a six-hour day by itself. It's like up here at 2:30 to meet them down there, and then I've been trying to get the plan online, so.
We must've had a lot of rain today. I got home everything.
See, you showed me up, ready to put it and stop tonight.
I can tell you, please, it's either that or the value of that water.
You can't tell anything by looking at me, Patrick.
I can't what?
You can't tell anything by looking at me, Patrick.
Well-
You make assumptions, and you don't-
You looked like after my response, you didn't like it.
Was that it, Julie?
No, rural management company.
Rebuild of the control valves at the plant. We have one lockup, they either way overdue for maintenance. I try to do as much as I can in-house, it's something I've never done. It was necessary, we had to filter down, I discussed that at the last meeting, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, need a motion to approve the bill? I'll make the motion to approve the bill.
One second.
All in favor? Julie, all in favor?
Yeah, all right, all right.
Okay, first one. Everybody wanna? I hope we got a whole bunch of correspondence. One, two, three, four.
This here just came in after the correspondence was given to you, from our attorney.
Okay, Sharon, a quick look at the letters and his right-to-know request, and who's this about?
This is Jim Huff's letter.
I don't know if you were looking for some specific guidance from your office on the content of those, but I will give you some general information. Unless these letters, questions are specifically on the agenda for the meeting, it would usually be something considered in the public comment period. The authority isn't under any legal obligation under the RTKL to respond to direct questions from an individual. It is good practice to do so, but not required by the law. We have, we have had municipalities in the past that commented questions under consideration at one meeting. They do not provide immediate answers, and they, and then they place issues raised on the agenda for the next meeting, so that there is time to review and consider the questions being asked. Let me know if you have any more specific questions and/or want to review the exact questions, issues that he was raising in these letters. I also received a lot of bills, and we are working on them. There you go. I'm good with that.
You go with that.
Can I have a copy of that?
Yeah.
She can have a copy. I wanna read it again.
All right. Okay, delinquencies?
Um, you have a thing from Christine, too. If you guys wanna look, I got two, and we can answer that at a later time.
Oh, Christine.
You know?
Okay, I didn't see that.
It's at the last one, it should be in the last page of it.
The other shoe.
Everybody got it.
I saw it, you have it.
Right there?
No, that's not it, I saw you have it.
All right, it's here. I'm going through it now. I'll make sure, I'll read it now before I come.
Want to go mine?
Yeah.
You can do what you're supposed to do, or whatever. Because I just got this, the other, June 30.
I didn't know that was due.
There is a period. There's no delinquencies, it's the last page of Christine's, should be the last.
Stop my meetings again. She's always complaining we don't go in executive session, right? Which is not the point we can do.
Yeah, but the executive session was that legal matters, that settlement agreement with our Houston township. We had to do that in executive session, asked for Jim Devittorio. He instructed us on how to do it, and that's what we did. There's no delinquencies since the bills just went out.
So, how many tonals do we have?
There is no, there are, the delinquencies aren't, they're not delinquent, because the bills just went out. So, they'll be-
There aren't any carryovers, is what I'm asking.
Oh, yes, there is carryovers, there's always gonna be carryovers. Our carryovers went down to $9,000.
From what? What were they before?
Yeah, it was 18,000. We had three judicial sales that we lost the money on, because once they go to judicial sale, and the sheriff has the same three, they lost money also. Once they sell, we cannot go after their. And the township bought one of them, so we don't even get money back from that. Somebody, I forget what other two, who they bought, but-
Were they bank repossession, maybe?
No, they're just judicial sales. Some people, they just go for like sheriff sale or judicial sales, and they just buy it, and we don't have a lien on it, which that's what I'm working with the lawyer now. We get liens on the other properties that we can get. But these here were back in 2000, before I got here.
I think they're called a mechanic's lien, is that what we need to put on them?
Yeah. No, but that's what, they were, they were in arrears before I got here, so.
So, but in the future, do we put like a mechanic's lien on the properties that are-
I just have to give them to the lawyer.
Okay, he'll do it, all right.
Yes. And it'll probably be a small fee for when he puts on, that's the way it is.
Okay, maintenance report.
So, that's all the correspondence, you had one correspondence?
Oh, we had, we had one, two, three correspondence. We'll look at them and respond at the next meeting, like the attorney of law.
Yeah, I just thought you were gonna read them now and respond at the next meeting.
No, we'll respond the next meeting. Maintenance report?
You want them right, or are we gonna?
This one, I wanna say one thing. I was at the township meeting, and we discussed on digging this line out here. And they had, they had really no problem with it, as long as Justin was down like he did and asked to dig across. And when you're burying it, just call them, so they see what you're doing.
Yeah, I had already spoken with them, whenever we go to backfield, they just want one of their guys there to watch us come.
That's all I wanna say, because-
No problem, whenever we're ready to call.
They did say they don't have a problem, but when you're, you know, call them when you're gonna dig, and when you're gonna backfill, call one of them up, so they can see. Nobody can say you didn't put it there.
You've been talking to Ronnie Silencia about this.
Yes, we're gonna start digging on Tuesday, 6th of May.
All right, I just wanted to mention that they said just to call one of their guys up when you're gonna bury it, you know, to make sure that nobody can say you didn't put such-and-such in.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna do it in layers, they're gonna be on-site when we're doing it.
And operators report, just on file for anybody.
Thank you, report and operator report, it's on file for anybody. You guys have any questions, we're both here to answer them. Okay, old business, CBD grant four.
I've touched on, since it's on here anyways, stream crossing. Does anybody have any questions with that?
Oh, I'm fine with it.
Okay, do we wanna take that off the agenda for next meeting? Real quick for four, I've received an email from Jim Huff. I just wanted to answer it at the meeting, that way if anybody else had the same questions, instead of me just getting back to him, that way everybody can get it. His first question was regarding the inch-and-a-half super paved overlay. How was it kind of gone about, added to the bid tabs? We try accounting for anything we might get into during a project. There are certain times where we do run into things unaccounted for. Say we had to replace four-inch waterline, we didn't technically have that as a bid tab on there or a bid item, so we would've had to add that. Generally, we just, it's a little bit of discretionary in terms of the unit price. We look at other unit prices we've gotten in the past recently from other projects. If they're comparable, that's normally what we end up agreeing upon. That's, I wanted to talk about that one. The hydrant valves, I know, Julie, you had mentioned that. That was a slip-up on me. If it's mentioned in the change order as hydrant valves, that's not exactly what it's for. Any valve associated with the hydrant was included on the first change order. Any valve associated with the hydrant wasn't included on the first change order. The hydrants, as our specifications say, include the hydrant, the piping to the hydrant and the valve there. Any additional valves, again, were, were put in place at T's, um, different interconnects, those kind of items. He also brings up the, the change orders and the pay, the payouts. Again, that was a discussion that myself and the funding agency had gone about at the beginning of the project. Um, I tried to at least make sure that everybody was aware of what change orders were coming through. Hindsight, again, I, I should've gotten everybody's approval at every single change.
Yeah, we, we shouldn't do them the way they were done.
Yes.
Next time.
Change orders to pay, I just, I, we should've gone through, gotten the board approval. So, um, other than that, we did a walkthrough today. There are still, um, five items that Rick is going to address. There's four manholes that were paved over and one curb box that we don't know where it is. Um, so, we're gonna, Rick is aware of that, he's going to be completing those. He said most of his guys are on vacation next week. It seems like that's a common theme right now with the approach everywhere. So he said his guys are gonna be back, I believe it's the 12th. If they don't come back, we can go after the performance bond. So, um, I mean, talking to the funding agency, they would like to see the final payment get dispersed. Again, if, if there's any additional services required that, that Rick would not wanna complete, then the performance bond is on the table. If it was supposed to be part of the project, the performance bond is still available.
I say you don't give them nothing until he comes back and does what he's supposed to do, then we're signed on. That's my opinion. He should've knew better in the first place not to cover the manholes. Now you can see one, but he did five, six, I don't know, I counted four when I was down there.
Yeah.
And I found them the other day.
But talking to the sewer authority, it's four I believe. There's three on ash and one on.
So, you know, with the other things, that's the only thing I'm holding up right now is come back and do it, you know what I mean, so we don't have to go back looking for them.
Yeah, that's part of the performance bond, but they do still have to do it. And honestly, I mean, if it, if, Brian, if it eases your stomach, I mean, I'll say it on the record, if he doesn't come back and we can't get it to do a performance bond, I'll come up with a jackhammer and get him on.
Uh, he oughta do it. He's the one that did it.
Yeah.
And another thing that I want the board to know, and as at the township meeting, they got a bill for 7,000. They had 4,000 extra payment, could've been on pine. For some reason, we didn't spend the 12,000 that we could've spent on pine. So I, I don't know why, but it's, wasn't done properly. So, tell him to come back and fix the manholes, then I'll approve it.
Brian, where do you think the breakdown was so that we don't do it again?
Um, I think it was, it was just communication. I think that's what it was, I mean, at the point where we could've, we probably would've noticed that there was an additional 4,000 available. At that point, we still would've had a mill, we would've had to have a mill on site.
And that was only there for a day.
Yeah, the quantities that we've gone over in the change order, I thought were gonna be pretty spot on. I didn't think that there would be an additional 4,000 available. 4,000, as Brian says, a lot of pavement. I mean, if we would've known that, we 100% could've milled out more and top coated more pine.
Well, you knew that, you knew you had $12,000.
Yes, and like I said, I thought all my quantities were adding up to right at that 11.5. Again, I knew that the board was under the opinion that we did not wanna go a dollar over. So we were kind of erring on the side of caution to not go over that additional 11.5.
Submitted the quote to the township at the full, 11.5 or whatever, based on what he could think, he thought he could pave like oak, ash, spruce, whatever, um.
Not ash, not ash.
No, ash was.
Spruce, maple, oak, oak maple. And that's what he thought would take to do what he did. He ended up not spending that much, but you know, like Brian says, he didn't know till the day of, the mill was already gone. So.
So you're saying it was poor planning on the contractor's part?
I guess he, he over, yeah, he overquoted it, I guess.
If we could've had a mill sitting there, which isn't the easiest thing to just have sitting around, they're in pretty high demand right now this time of year.
And it's, it's hard to slap the guy for doing it cheaper than what he did.
Cheaper than what he did?
Hard to slap the guy for not digging it deep enough.
He did it, he did it for cheaper and charged them $4,000 less than what he thought it was gonna be. Hindsight's obviously 2020, but, and then he didn't charge them for ash.
Well, yeah, well, yeah.
I could see why.
Let the record say, that's not their road anyway, but.
No, what I'm saying, they didn't, they didn't skim it an inch and a half anyway.
Still, not their road.
No, no, they didn't skim the, the contractor's road.
Shouldn't have been included at all, period.
Yeah, they didn't skim it.
There were core samples, it's all in with core samples.
That was on the side streets, not pine. I just can't see paying somebody for something.
If I'm an independent contractor and I'm gonna sell the water authority, I offered to sell the water authority a valve for $600. It turns out I can get it for three. And that's a one time, I can buy it that day for 300, but they only approved me to buy one. And you come back at me and say, "You should've bought us two."
No, the analogy's wrong. You got the $300 valve and you put it in the wrong place.
No. They did not charge anybody for putting any pavement in the wrong place.
Well, that's not a, that's not a bonus.
Right, but take Ash Street out of the equation. Everybody wants to com- everybody wants to complain about Ash. He ate that.
But he should have.
And that's not a township street.
Well, he should have eaten it, it was a mistake.
Exactly, so why are we complaining, why are they complaining?
Complaining because the pavement should've, that was on ash, should've been on pine.
Pine wasn't in quote. Again, hindsight's 2020, but he, he came in under his bid and there's a lot you could've done with that $4,000.
Whatever was what.
Not the water authority's money.
But it's gone pine, period.
But it is money.
But it's the township's money, so it's the township's problem.
Oh, and now it is, yes.
It is now.
Get it repaid by somebody else.
The water authority put as much funding towards that project as they could to pave as much as they could. So it's time for us to stop dragging our feet and move on and get the contractor paved. Because guess what comes next? Gonna cost us money, isn't it?
Nothing comes next. We've got 15 days to contact them.
It always comes next when it comes to the township.
Pine, I'm, I apologize, I'm getting upset about this.
Oh, you are, because.
Pine was paved and repaired to the spec from the beginning. Our obligation to pave pine was the trench, that's done. If the township's not happy they didn't get a top coat, not our problem, their problem.
I'm thinking about the people who live on pine, I'm not thinking about the town.
Did you drive down there?
I've been down there, yeah, I drive up there all the time.
If there were kids running around and there were cars parked all over, I would drive my Mustang 70 miles an hour down that street.
Right now.
Because it's perfectly flat and smooth. I don't see the issue.
And so everybody knows, I mean, we, I personally am working with the township on trying to get different solutions for wood paving down on pine, so.
I guess, my last statement, if the township has an issue with pine, let the township pursue pine.
They are.
We are, but the other streets, they gotta finish. They gotta quit doing the garbage.
We'll need to approve the funding to the contractor, or you're gonna be in some deep crap.
We've got 15 days. We send them a letter, get to work on first.
We don't have the time to defer this.
We've got 15 days, we have to send them a letter.
So then in 15 days, you need to schedule a executive session.
That's fine.
County, county.
We're not in executive, it's a special meeting.
What is, what is the county's timeframe?
Yeah, 'cause the funding agency takes up to three weeks to turn a payment request back.
If this isn't approved in time, the grant money we got will come out of our account.
We already paid four fifths of it. Well, the county did, there's been four payments paid.
Right.
There's 50,000 left.
The funding agency has mentioned that, that DCED has mentioned that if the funds aren't spent in a proper timeframe, there's a possibility that the funds will have to be repaid by the water authority.
Exactly.
So like DCE, right?
Just get it over with.
DCE, yeah, and he's, he's telling you what.
Well, what's the duty?
For the DCED grant funding, you need to, it needs to be discussed.
It does, yes.
Because you'll, you'll end up, you'll end up coming on your, your worst spot.
They're held responsible for it for two years. If those risers aren't.
They're held responsible to do the job right.
If those risers aren't put in within the next two years, you go after them, you make sure it's done. But the bill needs paid. I'm not on the board anymore, but this is my opinion, we need to do what's best for the authority and the community. You mess around any longer, you're gonna have to come up with 500 some thousand dollars.
And again, if for some reason, Rick told me that he will do it.
What they didn't do and I'm not wanting the litigation.
If it doesn't happen, we'll go to a performance bond. While that's happening, like I said, I'll personally come up and dig it up.
So the performance bond is held by whom?
The county, it's, it's there to back their work. So they can't come in and just mess anything up and just throw random sticks of the pipe in the ground. So if we get any kind of leak, the pavement peels, that kinda stuff, there's a bond out there, pretty much an insurance policy, that we can go back on and pull the correct money out to replace or redo the work.
How much is one for it?
Uh, I believe it's for like 520,000.
So you're, you're more than covered?
Yes.
Yep.
Do you need a motion? I guess the big concern right now, a lot of it is the sewer maintenance. Are you content with Rick's work and he's gonna come back and fix them?
Well, I couldn't get down there today, I had all the tenants, we're all going down here today. My wife called me earlier today with a house full of smoke and I had a circuit breaker, a GFI of all kinds of circuit breakers, burned up into logs, melted everything. So that's where I've been all day, is in the basement with fans and rewiring and fixing. I've never seen a breaker do that in my life, but.
A GFI?
Sounds like your house.
I had Cory, I got Cory.
Hey, I got mine out, it's alright.
No, and I'm not too worried about it, I mean, I know, I know Rick, I'm. I'm pretty sure I called our cops, they hate me down here.
He did dig down to the manholes on ash and they're, we don't have the riser for them right now, they're six inches.
You, you have one, it's sitting down at the township building right beside the wall. I guarantee you there's one.
Six inch?
Six inch.
Okay.
No, there's one.
'Cause I know we only have three inch and a half ones, that sewer floor, correct?
There should be, I think they bought four.
We used one on spruce.
You one on spruce, so they got three left.
Yeah.
I really don't care to stack them.
Yeah.
But there is a six inch down there, the only thing that's missing off of that six inch riser is, uh, those are the risers that you run the bolt out to expand them.
Yep.
The, the plate that went behind the bolts, I don't know where it is anymore. But I know there's a six inch riser down there, it's been standing down there since I, when I was supervisor. So they may need the drench cleaned up or whatever. But I know there's one, one six inch between the office and the garage. It's sitting there, I'll bet you, there may be more inside the garage, you'd have to ask, but they were the sewer authorities, right?
Right. Yeah, 'cause I knew the, the three inch and a half ones weren't gonna cover that.
We were in this predicament years ago, paving, and I actually borrowed, two of them from the city of St. Mary's. And I borrowed one from Herb's, please you all do boys, and we just replaced them and they were fine with it, so.
Yeah, and I know Catalent's have been great for you guys, we just talked to, well, another one of my clients talked to LB and they're out, they can't, Catalent said they're only a three day lead time.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so I'm just saying, those, uh, like I said, the CDC Mary's at that time, we needed, they had two that we got and Herb's, please you all have one in the city of New Boys, we borrowed them, put them in, got the job done and ordered them and replaced them, so we had that scenario. But I don't, I know there's one done. Are they all six inch?
Yeah, yeah, they're all five to six inch.
Like I said, I didn't get down there today, I had Cory down.
Yeah, 'cause the one, the one on maple doesn't need it, you can tell it's only about that far under.
I'll make sure we don't have any more slump issues. I'm inviting everybody to come very many, unless you come, I'll see you in next week's day.
See you.
See you. So Brian, you're, you're recommending we do the payout to Continental?
Correct.
I wanna make a motion that we complete the payment to Continental for the work they've done. And, um, holding the performance bond until the specs are done with the curb box and the four manholes.
A second of that.
Second of.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain.
I abstain, that's my point.
So who, who abstained?
That was me.
They, she abstained, she abstained.
You know, you don't know, you only know.
She's abstaining, I'm abstaining. We didn't vote on the other four, right?
So Fred, Fred, what's your vote?
Well, I'm still looking at the timeline.
What about we do a roll call vote so we have it correct? Deb made a motion, Deb?
Yes.
Um, Bram?
Undecided right now.
Lisa?
Yes.
Julie?
Abstain.
And Jim, I abstain. Bram?
Do you have a question, Sharon, decisions?
Usually people just vote yes or no and then.
If you're unsure, I've done the same thing.
I'm unsure.
Yeah, I've done the same thing.
But I know, I've worked with CBD, we need to pay the bill. Otherwise, we're gonna be taking long time to pay this and we're gonna pay much more for all the.
But they, they put up that money.
So.
We're gonna vote yes, but I'm holding you reliable that they will be clean and done properly. Okay?
Yep.
'Cause the each group is supposed to be watching this whole ordeal too.
They don't pay.
And I'm very.
So if they think they can back it.
Okay, I'm very mad at you people for some things that you guys should've been watching and you didn't watch through this whole outfit. So I don't, I'll ever see it happen again. So I'm holding you liable, the each group.
So they hold the bond.
And I do want a copy of your insurance this week. I vote yes to pay it, but I'm holding each group liable that that work gets done.
That's what bond is for. I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on.
Guys, while we're making motions, um, just so we have it on record, we probably need to, um, vote upon substantial completion. That starts the, um, pay, the two year warranty on it. Again, the work's been completed. The pipe's been in the ground now for five months. Normally, what we would end up doing is since the pipe has been in the ground for five months, we'll backdate that part of it and then the pavement will start right now. If that works for four.
Say again.
Um, just since the pipe has been in the ground, we've been using it for five months now.
Okay.
I didn't wanna sign the substantial completion until everything was complete. So what we normally end up doing is backdating the pipe part, so anything water system related, hydrants, um, our main lines, that kinda stuff, the substantial completion will backdate for when it was completed.
Okay, yeah.
And then the paving will have a substantial completion date of, we can start it now. And then the paving will have a substantial completion date of, we can start it now.
Okay. You need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
What he said. I make a motion.
Can I have a second?
I'll make the second.
Okay, you can make it. That's fine.
I'll make the second on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So everybody say yes?
I, I don't know the answer, so I'm gonna abstain.
So we got Julie abstaining and Jim abstaining. Got it.
All right. Job description?
We've got still on.
Still paid. Okay, Taffy?
Okay, I did, um, no, I, um, we got on the last minute. I just got it when I came back in from our lawyer about the rules and regulations. So when I get a chance to make copies, we can all review them and then we can bring it to the next meeting. So I'll make, I'll make copies for everybody, but I just thought I'd add 6:30 tonight when I have it.
Okay, CDGD, Burndale, councilor?
We need our board. Talking at least 22 weeks before we do that. He was gonna try to get us, if he could get a hold of some meters, he was gonna try to get us, if he could.
How many? We? Two.
Twenty, twenty plus.
That was an effort. It's, it's passed.
Yeah.
It's already passed. I mean-
Yeah.
We've got it.
We've got it for approval.
That's with everything. Everything's stock over for everything.
Yeah, it's microchips.
Yeah.
Semiconductors, I guess.
Cold assured applications to water, I guess we'll figure that out once we get our tap line feed in place, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Once we, this should be taken care of at the next meeting.
Okay.
So I just thought that.
That's gotta be a must.
Just leave it there.
All righty, fiber to the well.
Made my spiel on it. They mean there's a moment to make this work out. Is that all I hear on it?
Well, and again, I mean, I wanna hear from everybody, obviously, but I mean, I'm, I'm for it. I know that.
I'm, I'm for it now. I'm for it more now than I was before.
Me too. Now that they explained it.
I, I sit here and try to break it.
Yeah, I, I mean-
Well, I get it. I mean, now, I read up on it and it says it's very fragile. It's very, it's like glass. It's glass.
It's still overkill, no matter how you look at it.
There's always other ways to do it, but like they said, this is-
To elaborate a little bit also, Patrick, we also, help me out here, Brian, talk about maybe revamping the filter system upper at the well to give better quality off the well. So when, like last summer, we rolled the well for, well, for a long period of time, the water got pretty crappy. Um, that tailpipe system would help better treat that, which in hindsight, you'd need more amper, or cable upper to run your filters and better system.
If that well-
On that aspect, it'd be beneficial.
If that well ends up being used long term for long periods of time.
Due to drought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or we lose the streams to pollution or something, there needs, there would have to be an alternative treatment.
That 7,000, that was for them guys putting it in and everything, the way I understood the last one. 'Cause it was four if you was gonna do it.
Right. Yeah, they, you take off labor, they would have labor exploited.
Oh, yeah, and I totally agree with having them do it, 'cause we don't wanna screw it up.
Well, that sending the signal from, you know, your place down there up to here and getting rid of that other internet bill, I mean-
That would be, that's a separate project. You'd start with it.
Yeah, but throw it in for a little bum.
You said it was like 300 bucks or something.
Well, I, I guess that's bigger stuff.
Yeah.
Patrick, I'm gonna ask you a question. Um, that's installing the fiber and the-
They would do the terminations. The SCADA company would have to do their end of the day.
Okay, so how much more is that?
That I don't know. We'd have to contact them.
Well, we need to do that too.
I don't see how it would be very much. Because they, they already have the stuff set up to the radio boxes at each end of the building. So they would just have to make the right network.
We need some kind of interface.
Right.
To change it from fiber, from the radio.
Regardless, in the meantime, the radios will work until Cambria's here.
Can we get it final?
Can we get, um, yeah.
Yeah, final quote on the whole thing.
On everything.
Yeah, even the signal from here down to there.
But every time we go for Carlson Technologies keep giving us a price, it could go up because of the cost of material, so we have to decide.
Well, we, we understand, but you know, I get the prices and we'll make the decision.
Because we can't do anything without a cost. I mean, you can't, that'd be ridiculous.
Yeah. So I'll get, I'll get the Cambria's quote on what they think it would be to connect on both ends. And then make sure, um, Carlson's has the updated quote with the new price on fiber. And then an additional quote to do, uh, line of sight down with the plant.
And that, that would be fine. And I mean, I'm, I'm all for this, but if it ain't a lot, even a price on copper, like she said, even though, you know, I mean, this is probably the best way to go right now.
The SCADA company would probably be the best to ask that question.
If you get a price on copper, then we can say, you know, please do that.
Mod buses and stuff.
Well, yeah, the mod bus is just a software platform that runs. That's why I don't understand why we need fiber. We don't need fiber, not for that bandwidth.
But for, he said the price was so close, mod bus versus fiber that-
Well, no, no, no. Mod bus would still be running over the fiber from the SCADA.
I don't think so.
Components. You don't think so?
No, I don't think that's, I don't think that's, he has it working almost like broadband, I think. It would work, it would work the same as ethernet.
Well, you can have an ethernet connection on either end if you like. I mean, it's-
I don't know enough about it to-
Well, anyway, get Cambria.
So he, to go that distance, he needed other equipment.
Uh, to go that distance, he just needs the right wire.
No, you had the same, I supported you the same email he sent me.
I know, but that was very big.
Wow.
That was very big. I couldn't make it. And I haven't seen the schematic. If I could see the schematic-
We had CTI come up and do a presentation.
That'd be great.
Cambria come up and do a presentation.
That'd be good too.
Month to month to month to month, summer's coming, well needs to run.
We need quotes.
Yeah.
And then people bring a meeting, get the quote.
Get the quotes.
I don't know what the lock breaker's gonna be.
Goldie.
But if it's, they could be up to two hours away if that well's on manual mode.
Well, you know, that's a good question. That's a very good question, Patrick.
If I'm not available.
That's a very good question. We need a management plan, an emergency plan.
We will talk about that later.
Oh.
As part of the executive session.
I see.
Because, I mean, I'll delve on it now. If, if something happens to that well this summer, I'm not leaving my employer to come down and deal with it. I'm not gonna jeopardize my job there.
Uh, we wouldn't.
So, and I, and I think you guys will do that and that, yeah. So that's why I wanna talk about-
All right, let, let's get this, uh, everything set.
Yeah, just get our quotes for the next fee, you know, we get this done.
Patrick, on that quote, are you gonna get the tracer wire?
Uh, we can get it. I can have them included, yeah. Catalent's has it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, actually, that tracer wire.
Every pole box, you put a twist and you can connect it.
Yeah, it's really a roll wire. It's cheap. I mean, we'd be crazy not to put that in ground.
Exactly.
That's for somebody, when we get old and gray and die, somebody else can find it.
All right, Vinnie Gambino, drainage to the well. You were showing me that a little bit. That well up there is a swamp, just a swamp mess. And he wanted to have Vinnie come up and do some ditch work up there.
Steew wet?
What's that?
If it's stew wet?
No, 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 no. Once he does it, that doesn't have anything to do with it. Once, once he does the ditch work, then the wetness will be gone.
Okay. So we put that on for the next year's budget? Do we have to do it this year? Is it a, is it a 100% that we have to do it this year or can we put it on?
If we're gonna be doing stuff with this fiber optics and they have to be going to the well and stuff, we have to make-
Yeah, I mean, it, again, it's up to the board. I mean, uh, I think it needs done, but you know-
I'm just asking, that's why.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
What do you think? It's gonna cost 500 bucks?
Well, I mean, how much time is he gonna have into it, Justin?
Yeah.
Uh, me and Patrick figured, and, uh, Vince figured about two, two and a half days.
Okay.
He said it's eight hour days. It might be less.
Yeah.
But it's just not gonna be any more than that.
He's, he came up and walked in with us. He said two to three days. Um, and we can limit him to that. Do the, I, I said prioritize it. Do the important stuff first. Once the big stuff's done, work your way through, get some of your stuff done. Once the three days is up or whatever you guys set.
And what's, what's three days worth of work for him?
It's right around like a thousand bucks, I think. Uh, give or take, I'm not 100% sure on that, but we figured it out. It's gonna be, I think, right around 1,200.
Whatever his, he has to charge his payment price.
Don't you think we need a quote?
Yeah.
Just make up a, make up a three day quote for it.
I don't think-
Plus the stone you're gonna need.
You can do that. He already submitted.
Oh, because the work he does for us is by hourly.
If you're, if you're gonna request a quote from him, you'd have to request a quote from-
Of course, anybody else.
But if you base it off of his, his contract with us.
Is it 100 or 100 and a half?
No.
Was it 60? Justin, is he gonna put any, uh, infrastructure in for drainage or is it just ditches?
Also, he's gonna do ditch work. Uh, me and whoever I have with me, uh, Jim, uh, Patrick, whenever he's available, we will go through with pipe that we have and put our own pipe across.
Okay, like French draining?
Yeah, all, all we want Vince to do is just open it up.
Okay.
Well, I thought you weren't working there anymore.
As needed.
Huh?
As needed.
Oh, as needed?
So I-
I thought you were the operator and then somebody else was there.
We covered this at the township meeting, the water meeting. I'm still on payroll as needed to train, to do repairs.
I think we should be.
But ideally, that's not something would be very smart to have the water authority come up for me to do. We have-
Yeah.
We should be able to get Vince to buy a minimum of $10,000.
Put that to bid.
We got the date of the screening, so.
Brian, just, we should put that to bid.
No.
You're just getting someone to ask you?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I think we can ask Vince for-
A bid?
Yeah, furnished. Oh.
It's not, it's not that much, but go ahead, put that three days in.
Seventy-five, if the 1,800 dollars suffice, it's 75 an hour. He's using the-
Oh, for three days?
1,800 dollars.
Pay for-
Mini excavator with operators, that was 75 dollars an hour, so-
How many days, how many hours?
You do eight hours, it's 600 dollars. You do eight hours, it's 600 dollars a day.
1,800 bucks.
How much was it to rent an excavator? Then I want a price, them dropping it off and coming and getting. You know, Tom, we'll track it up to where Lucchini's Road comes out, you know, bottom of the-
Well, we track right back to the well.
Okay.
Back to, back to the park.
I'm just so tired of getting that done.
Me too.[1569.87]